Okay.
Glad he can't hear me.
I was just gonna say, how come he hasn't responded?
Yeah.
He called him Buddha.
Good afternoon. Like to open the, uh, a, uh, a meeting, a Board of, Harwich Board of Selectment meeting, Board of Selectment meeting for, uh, August eighteenth, twenty twenty. And, uh, I guess we'll start with the normal pledge of allegiance, why not?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so everyone knows, this, this is a special meeting to give us an opportunity to, uh, go through additional town warrant articles. There's a chance we will have a...
Go ahead, there's our, the webcam's freezing.
Okay.
You're fine.
I'm fine. We'll have a, uh, a series of these, cause, uh, so we can catch up and complete the town warrant in time to get it printed for town meetings, which is now scheduled for September twenty-sixth, right, Joe?
That's correct.
We have, uh, we have this room until approximately, approximately six fifteen. So the intent tonight is to start stepping through the warrant articles and, and an hour and a few minutes, we'll stop and we'll, we'll, hopefully we'll make progress by that point. So Joe, I'll turn it over to you and we'll... That's our only agenda item tonight is the, uh, warrant articles.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, and welcome members. Um, so what you have in front of you should be a full, uh, hard copy of the latest version of the warrant, and we know that because starting on, uh, second page, it says version five with today's date on it, and a pirated copy of the Finance Committee Chairman's spreadsheet that reflects their votes. Dana, what were those votes as of, uh, your, your FinCom votes on that?
That would be as of our... That's right up to date.
Thank you, and so I've, um, any updates that I've made today are highlighted in, uh, in yellow, both on the, uh, what I'm calling the status of articles and, um, changes that I wanted the board to be aware of, and then if you wanted to take certain votes. Uh, first though, I just want to note that I have some, um, of my reminder notes on the front page. So I think I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, last night at your meeting on the seventeenth, that I had heard back from, uh, Town Council, John Giorgio, regarding consent agenda. And, um, what he is suggesting is as, as we go through the warrant, if there are articles that you all believe would warrant, uh, consent agenda, I can identify those and regroup them, um, within the warrant. And that is an opportunity then for us to try to speed through the meeting, uh, in late September, not for the purpose of speeding through, but to make sure we get everything done in a timely fashion while outdoors. Um, so, um, if you could just bear that concept in mind as you go through it. I also wanted you all to, um, uh, see some of the, um, efforts I've taken to sort of make this my version of a warrant, um, rather than just continuing on what predecessors may have done. And, um, the best example of that will come up when we get into Article eleven. And then lastly, we, we had talked at, um, prior meetings about updating the glossaries. I have that information, but haven't updated it yet, so that information will change. So, um, Mr. Chairman, there's a few ways to go through it. We could either go based off of the spreadsheet, uh, that you have in front of you, uh, with the highlights, or we can go through the book. Either way, my first discussion point would be relative to, um, Article nine at this point.
Okay, so, the, when the agenda item, the one administration, the two... That, we're not going to follow that agenda items, just as they're, uh, we can start with, uh, private petitions first? It's what you're, what you're indicating?
So the, um...
I'm just trying to match this up with the agenda on what the process is.
I think if you look at the table of contents, uh, on pages, um, Roman numeral one and two, uh, those match. Uh, those are the headers that the appropriate articles get to. What we didn't, um, when I say we staff, what we weren't sure of is, I didn't want to make reference to article numbers in case they changed, and I didn't want to omit anything, so we're trying to work under that headline of the articles related to those. So, for example...
Administration then defines which articles?
It's fourteen and fifteen currently.
Thank you, yep.
And that would be the, um...
Lease purchase agreements and, uh...
Yeah, lease purchase agreements and then the, uh, PEG fund request.
Okay, so...
So...
So we would start with those as far as votes.
Okay.
Um, any of the financial matters that preceded it, I'm going to be giving updates on, but I'd ask you to hold off on those until next week.
I would like to hold off, I like to do the easy ones, not financial yet until we get our budget reports.
But if you, uh, match it up with your, uh, list of articles, the reason why I've identified Article nine, um, as you can see now, it's the Article nine on page, roman numeral, uh, lowercase. Uh, one says wastewater sewer department budget, and if you go to that article which appears on, let me see here, page twelve of the draft warrant, what I wanted to highlight, um, actually is you can see now that it, those have changed from request of Board of Selectment to those would be requests of the Water and Wastewater Commission. As I mentioned at last night's meeting, that charter effect is now in, uh, that charter change is now in effect, so that the chartered, uh, amendment that relates to the new Water and Wastewater Commission, they would be responsible for their financial articles. The Board of Selectment would be responsible for anything related to the, um, comprehensive wastewater management plan. And so that's factored in there, so that's something that happened on June thirtieth that we're going to have weave throughout the document. Again, just to update you quickly on some items that, the financial items that I would not be looking for action on yet. Um, Article eleven is the capital items funded from free cash, items under fifty thousand dollars. So as you know, there's been quite a bit of effort, uh, Carol and I and department heads, and really just trying to, um, reexamine everything in light of the pandemic impact upon revenue and all of that. So what I wanted to ask the board is I know in years past, for example, you can see in that table there under Article eleven, the item for the fire department is a capital contribution to offset a grant. And so I know in years past, there was a dollar amount, there was a negative dollar amount, and, um, I was trying to go for clarity, but I wanted the board to be aware that I've made potential changes in this. Again, you're not going to vote on it tonight, but, um, I'd like to walk you through it and you tell me if I'm on the right track or if you'd like me to sort of match what has been done in years past. So the only two items that we expect to have come under this right now are those two that you can see there for the Police Department and the Fire Department. The explanation that I have there is a draft explanation, meaning it's rough language, but the, the content is the same. So you can see that the explanation that regarding the air packs, there's a total there of five hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents, and that is the grant amount that Chief LeBlanc has been pursuing, and that we are extremely hopeful that we'll get word well before town meeting that we've, we've been granted that. That full amount is offset, excuse me, that's the full amount of the purchase, that's confirmed, the five seventy-five. The grant amount that we're expecting is that five forty-seven number. So then the delta between those two is twenty-seven thousand, three eighty-eight, eighty-two. Twenty thousand of which is funded by this article, and the remaining seven thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents is covered in the fire department's operating budget. And that's because the terms of the grant are such that the town not only has to make a contribution, that's the twenty thousand, but there also has to be a commitment to train to the quality of the air packs. And that's why that training item has to be there. So does that table make sense, or should I go back to the past years of how you've articulated it?
Comment, but from anyone, Michael?
I think it makes a lot more sense. So the, the motion would be for the five hundred and seventy-five, one sixty-five, eighteen, and then, uh, with five hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six, thirty-six being paid by grant, twenty thousand being paid, uh, by town and...
By, by capital, by this article, yep, correct, exactly.
Yeah, so that's, I think it makes a lot more sense.
So...
Go ahead, Ed.
The, um, the motion would be for for Article eleven, uh, because you have two, two separate items in it. And, and the amount that Article eleven is funding is thirty-four thousand, nine, ten.
Right, the estimated cost hasn't changed.
I broke it out, but yes, because it's combined, yep.
But you wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily, um, need to mention the five forty-seven, uh, seven...
Not in the motion.
Not in the motion, because it's not mentioned in the article. And even though we're, we are going to buy it, it would be, um, basically putting in the article an appropriation, uh, or it would expand the amount of the the appropriation way beyond what the article talks about.
Let me just, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, let me, let me see if I can clarify. Our, our mission tonight is to vote to accept and adopt a warrant article.
Yeah.
FinCom will make the motion at town meeting, and they would read into the motion the language of the five seventy-five contingent on the grant and so on.
Yeah.
So we don't need to do that tonight, we can vote on a warrant article, do we accept? Yeah, the term we use always is accept and, uh, adopt and accept this warrant article. Someone, we can move through those and get a motion, we can move ahead if we're in agreement. Does that help?
Absolutely. And then, um, was there a further comment on that one?
No, because I think if, uh, we've talked about, there's no reason not to go ahead, someone cares to move to...
Can we though, it's not, can we? I don't believe that one's on the agenda.
No, those, um, the chairman and I had spoken, and we were going to hold off on any of those budget type articles.
So that's just explanation, well, let's go, we have that, this didn't start, you suggested going was nine, the petition articles?
Um, so item, Article nine was just to demonstrate that the wastewater commission is now in effect, that that would change from the Board of Selectment article to the way, to the Water and Wastewater Commission.
Larry?
I...
If I, if I may, I want to start right at the top of the list.
Yeah, I'm saying that we...
But I get what Joe's saying, that we're not talking, he's given us an explanation that we're just not talking about that one. It's not a problem.
I'm just, right, but I'm just trying to get grounding from you folks as I continue writing.
No, that's, that's good, I think we understand where you're going, I think we're in agreement with that.
Yep.
In, in the interest of time though, I'd like to go ahead and mark, mark your articles that we can do tonight. So we'll start at the beginning.
And I agreed last night to meet with the water commissioners to discuss the amount of money in that article.
Okay.
So that they could come back with a lesser amount, hopefully.
Okay, good.
The other, uh, ask that I have, as you go through that, is, uh, we have the Finance Committee Chairman here, and there were some items where the Finance Committee had been looking at a source of funds that were different from what the Finance Director and I were looking at. And so I wanted to have a discussion on that if we could at some point this evening, just to make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, this, this, uh, I don't want to lose focus, I want to get as many articles as we can go first, and then just leave five, ten minutes at the end to go back to that, Joe. Okay, uh, Michael, you want to, uh...
So I'll start the administration, so, uh, I'm not going to make the motion with article numbers, correct, Joe?
Correct.
So I move, uh, that we accept, adopt, and put in the warrant lease purchase agreements as listed in the warrant. Is that good enough, Joe?
Just tell me what page you were at.
I was on fourteen.
Thank you. That's fourteen and fifteen.
This is your article number, I don't know the page, but we're...
Article number fourteen, but it happens to be on page fourteen in my computer, I don't know if that matters.
It does match up, yep.
I'm cheating and reading off of Dana's spreadsheet, so sorry to go...
So that's accept, adopt, and place in the warrant lease purchase agreements.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Thank you for getting that, we have to add some more. Roll call, Steve? Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you.
So we can check that one off.
Okay, I move that we accept, adopt, and place in the warrant PEG fund request as presented in the warrant.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Uh, all in favor, again, Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Ed?
Aye.
Thank you. On these items, I do have further information if you'd like, because quite of it has changed.
On the DPW?
Correct.
Okay.
I did get a chance to speak to Link today, so I think I'm up to speed.
Do we, uh, uh, do we want to postpone that and go to the other articles and then come back to it? Okay, Joe, explain to it.
So, um, these are related to the original, uh, capital plan and conversations that, uh, Carol first had with Link, and then I had with Link, and, um, Sean Libby on the facility stuff for this one. Well, we're, um, what they've agreed to do is we're, uh, deferring the, uh, purchase of the dump truck and the van, which was the Ford F, uh, two fifty, uh, the Ford E-two fifty. Uh, those two items are deferred, but we've made the commitment to the, uh, catch basin cleaner, which, um, DPW is considered to be critical, and I agree with them. So that request is for two hundred and fifteen thousand, and I'm not sure if the Finance Committee Chair was aware, but, um, that is expected to come out of free cash.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
You want, I'll entertain a motion to accept and adopt.
Mr. Chair?
Ed?
Um, I, I move that we support the, uh, inclusion of the purchase and equip, uh, vehicle for the DPW.
And placing a warrant for the two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah. Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh...
Uh, procedural question, if I may? What is the expectation of the board, that explanation needs to be modified. I need to clean it up, put it into English syntax.
If you clean up your explanation, if you can clean up your explanation, we'll be fine with that.
Okay.
Go ahead with it.
Nothing else would change, obviously, but, yep.
What, what's wrong with the explanation?
Um, I put it in as notes forms, I didn't put it in sentence format. I could be a little bit more elegant, elegant and eloquent.
Dramatically correct.
Yes.
Please.
But the substance of the article and the warrant, everything else is...
We have not yet. Just ask discussion, Ed, anything else? If not, uh, I'll take a roll call vote, Ed?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Michael?
I'm an aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, uh, the next one on the road maintenance, um, not to suggest that that's all we need, but, uh, after discussion, it's been agreed that the ask is going to be three hundred fifty thousand dollars rather than the seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, again, I think if you recognize that we're talking about a town meeting that is going to be, uh, an additional two hundred days away from the next town meeting, that, um, should get us through the minimal that we'd need to get done, but, um, that is, um, in agreement with the, um, DPW Director, and again, that amount would be coming from free cash. And same commentary on the explanation.
Michael?
Move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant road maintenance program in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand.
Second.
Second, the move is in seconded, any discussion?
Well, I, I think the, the important part of it is that, right now, in local funds in the road maintenance program, we only have about a hundred thousand dollars, which could be easily, easily swept away by, uh, any, not even a very major road collapse or, or occurrence, and, and so having a larger amount is absolutely necessary, uh, to prepare us for any emergencies that will be coming our way.
I also believe that last year, the seven hundred thousand that was in the warrant was denied by the taxpayers, so we went a year without the extra seven hundred thousand. So I think it's warranted.
Moves and sec, now Dana, jump in anytime you wish in the discussion. We have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor, Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so, uh, Joe, we've...
Thank you. On, on the next one, my only concern is I, I hadn't had a chance to validate that that amount is actually going to be, um, attributed from free cash.
Okay.
So if the board's willing to hold on that or, or make it dependent on a funding source, uh, whatever you, uh, whatever your preferences.
Uh, let's go ahead and hold that, because we're going to have to go through, we're not going to complete it tonight, so...
Which, which, which article are we talking about?
Perpetual care funds, that's the cemetery, cemetery article. So that'll come out of the perpetual care fund.
Not out of free cash.
Not out of free cash, is that?
Yeah, so there's a notation, um...
Pardon?
Can I speak to that? So I have burned that in.
Identify yourself, please.
Well, uh...
Robin County.
Robin, before you go there, I just want to state that the confusion is that the Finance Committee had it as a free cash item. I did not.
All right.
Dana?
Yeah, we can fix it, um, Friday night.
So we can vote?
No problems.
Vote, and we have a funding source, there's no reason not to.
Thank you.
Right, yep.
Michael?
I move that we accept, adopt, and, uh, put in the warrant memorial tree replacement in the amount of twenty thousand to be paid out of the perpetual care fund.
Second.
Any other discussion? Robin, did you want to speak to this, are we okay now?
Um, we're okay, we'll be, we'll be planting native species, and I'm working with the garden club to come up with, uh, where they're going to be placed. Got a group of women who are, got together and want to give us input on which trees they would like planted.
Great.
Thank you, Robin. We have a motion and a second, so, uh, all in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you.
What's next on the...
Channel eighteen.
Channel eighteen.
Channel eighteen, right?
Yep. I move that we accept, adopt, and place in the warrant, uh, control room playback server upgrade in the amount, uh, or estimated amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And it's going to be funded by the cable-related fund established at annual town meeting two thousand and sixteen, Article thirty-six.
I was looking for the article on that, okay.
Second. Second.
Wait, what article is that again?
It's, it's listed as Article nineteen, Larry.
Nineteen.
Appears on page seventeen.
Nineteen. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve, I seconded.
Any other, any discussion? If not, all in favor, and I'll do a roll call, Michael, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so...
Thank you.
You're going to do Griffin Room Improvements?
Article twenty, so I move that we accept, adopt, and place in the warrant article, well, not in the article, Don B. Griffin Hearing Room Improvements in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, also to be paid out of the cable-related fund.
Second.
I'm just giving you guys the eagle eye and make sure it goes through.
I saw you bouncing around.
The dollar amount's correct, though, right? I know we had to change, thank you, yep. Thank you.
Okay.
I think this is more critical than ever, given where we're at with, uh, meetings.
Uh, discussion, we'll, uh, we'll hold on Jamie's discussion until afterwards. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, excuse me, roll call, Ed started, I fall into a trap, I'm aye.
I'm...
Michael?
I'm an aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So next is our Harbor Master Department request.
Well, I don't have any information yet on funding source for that one.
Okay.
I don't know if the Finance Committee Chairman could, uh...
Yeah, this is the boat ramp in, uh, Round Cove. Uh, Dana, do you have any additional information on that one?
Yeah, I believe it's going to come from waterway funds, but, uh, the Finance Committee hasn't voted yet either. Um, but I believe that's the source of funding.
So Dana, we have it on your list as a six, zero vote of FinCom, is that, should that be removed?
Oh, wait, maybe they voted it when I wasn't there, so, um, it's possible that that's... I didn't write in a funding source, so...
Uh, Michael?
I'm pretty sure it's waterway fund, but I'll double check that and let you know.
I'm, I'm going to move to approve supplemental funding for Round Cove Boat Ramp. I think funding to be determined, I, I, it's a hundred and seventy-seven, so that's my motion, I'll get a second before I talk.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so I, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand is being pulled from, uh, previous articles. So I think that that's clear, the estimated cost of the project's two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, I've used that bow ramp, I've heard from a lot of people in the public, that is probably the worst ramp we have, and it does cause a significant amount of damage to people's boat trailers, so...
And, uh, Michael, that's been in the works now for probably seven years, you know? Tom tried to dump and do concrete underwater, and it, that sort of worked for a year or two, but I, I get the same feedback, it's, uh, we're lucky it hasn't been bigger accidents there, you know?
Well, let, let's hope the, uh, rest of the funding comes from harbor receipts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, motion isn't...
Is there a second?
There was, I, I seconded it.
Seconded it, any discussion? If not, all in favor, Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so...
Also, potentially inquire the state if there's any leftover funding in the Seaport Economic Development Program. Uh, this is the sort of thing that they do fund. I'll ask, make the appropriate request of our legislators on that.
Uh, the next group is the Board of Assessors. Do you all jump in on any of these?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, if you'll notice on that one, um, when this came through administration, there's an anticipated cost of thirty thousand dollars, and that's expected to be the net effect of that being adopted and implemented. Um, and I know that it's referenced on the, um, Finance Committee sheet as no cost, but, um, I think we just want to make, put it out there that there's an, uh, financial impact if that were to pass. Having said that, uh, you can see that it's, uh, both passed both by the Board of Assessors and the Finance Committee.
And, uh, what's the source of funds on that, Ed, is that, uh, the funds?
Yeah, that one, that one would actually come out of your, um, overlay account, the four hundred thousand there, which is high anyways. So, um, you know, we just feel that right now that can absorb that amount. Typically, we run two hundred to three hundred thousand on abatements, we have four hundred thousand in there. Um, as you know, um, to fill that bucket, it takes two dollars for every one. So if you add thirty thousand, that will cost us sixty thousand to do that. Uh, we, we'll just, um, leave it the same and, and absorb that.
Let me follow your logic on that, Dana, just briefly, who makes the decision on that? Do I go back to the assessor's office to, uh...
The assessors and the, um, the, the Director of Finance are both carrying four hundred thousand in the, um, latest thing she gave you last night, um, that's what's in there, four hundred thousand.
Okay, so, they can, my question is, do they make that decision, use part of that money to pay for this? And do we need to...
That, yes, basically, these, uh, if we adopt these, it would, um, end up giving, um, seniors and veterans some exemptions, and, um, those would be covered by the overlay account.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I just want to be sure that it's clear it's going to be covered by the overlay account.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what, that's what the overlay account is set up for, is to fund the exemptions.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you for that. Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I move that...
Excuse me, Ed, before you do that...
And just finally, again, with these three articles, remember that, uh, it's supporting the Board of Assessors looking for legislation to be filed.
Right, okay, good point.
I move that we, uh, include, uh, um, this is actually a home rule petition, to, to adopt it, MGL Chapter ninety, Section five, Clause eighteen, hardship under age sixty to provide for a hardship exemption for, uh, Harwich residents under the age of sixty, and estimate, with an estimated potential cost of thirty thousand dollars if approved.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, then move in a second, Michael?
The only discussion is Ed mentioned, um, Chapter ninety in his motion, if I'm reading it correctly, it would be Chapter fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, I, yes.
Will we make that correction, Ed?
Yep.
And we have a second, you okay with that, second?
Yep, yep.
Other discussion? If not, we'll roll call vote, Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Ed?
Aye.
We have a second of the, uh... We have a second of the, uh, same category.
I move that we accept and adopt MGL Chapter fifty-nine, five, Clause forty-one A, tax deferral, and include it in the warrant.
Second.
Second. Other discussion? Now, all in favor? Uh, Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Who was the second on that one, please?
I think Ed was.
Ed was.
Thank you.
That's far as part of this, y'all, is keeping track of the motions and seconds.
Thank you.
A move that we accept and adopt MGL Chapter fifty-nine, five, Clause fifty-six, assessment of local taxes, property exemptions.
I'll second it, and I'll note that this is to provide up to 100% abatement of the total tax assessed to members of the Massachusetts National Guard and to reservist on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal year they perform such service, subject to eligibility criteria.
Okay. And we have a, uh, motion in a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, just that, this is in existence already, it needs to be renewed every two years, and this is the year to renew.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye on that, so.
Thank you, and then, as you know, you dispatched of Community Preservation your meeting on August seventeenth, so if you would draw your attention, uh, to the next article, which appears on page twenty-four, um, but at this point in time, I would ask that we hold off on, uh, action on, um, these two items, we're still working out, uh, the kinks for, uh, both revolving funds and the language on the revolving funds.
Okay.
And then the next one would be relative to unpaid bills for free cash, and, um, no objection to moving forward on those. And that would begin on the end of page twenty-five.
Well, usually we'll have much discussion on these, so we have to pay our bills. Michael?
A move that we accept, adopt, and put in the warrant, fund prior year's unpaid bills, uh, for a total of 7,595.83.
Second.
Steve seconded that, Joe. Any other discussion?
Just, if I may, um, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Chairman of the Finance Committee, uh, so that number, um, I remember that chart directly, that chart's been updated, I think, on our end, uh, but Dana, you folks had a lower amount.
Yeah, we'll pick it up Friday night. I'm making notes as we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the motion is to, uh, accept and adopt?
Yeah.
And are we going to qualify it then with the, with whatever the final number is? What was your point of discussion with Dana?
So the Finance Committee had taken action on this at a lower amount, they're going to correct their amount on Friday.
Okay.
So ours is correct.
Ours is correct. Okay. So we have a motion second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
And then, uh, Mr. Chairman, before you proceed to these, this is just an education opportunity for me.
Yeah.
Um, our, our library director, um, was kind enough to bring me up to speed on these additional libraries, I've driven by them hundreds of times, never taken notice, um, but I understand that this private petition is a standard article that we do here in Harwich, so, uh, we're looking for that to be through, uh, free cash.
Entertaining a motion to, uh, move?
A move that we accept and adopt, defray the expenses of the Chase Library and Harwich Port Library in the amount of 20,000 dollars.
A second. Uh, Joe, historically, uh, there was a time way back when where these articles were debated, and, uh, in fact, we had the Finance Committee at one time always argue against these, but it was, they're so very popular in the town that was, it always got voted in by a huge majority, so, uh, we lost interest in debate. Ed?
Now, no, that was before I was on the Finance Committee, I was a member of the Board of Selectmen in those debates.
Just historically, Ed?
And, and actually, historically, there was a time when both of these, uh, these, uh, expenditures were line items in our general fund, um, they were actually taken out of the general fund when it looked like we would have to, uh, pay benefits for the, the library's employees, um, if they remained in such.
Okay, uh, we have a motion in a second.
Was there a second on that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
It was, yeah. Ed's second. All in favor, and, uh, Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye on it.
Can I just ask a clarification question? Um, petition articles, uh, is the proper motion to accept, adopt, and include in the warrant, because they're included in the warrant anyway, correct?
Yeah, probably.
We don't have a say?
Right.
Is this more of a Board of Selectmen showing their support?
Yes.
For these articles?
Yeah.
So should the motion be support or not support?
That's a good question, I would, no, I would say support on this case, and that's a good point.
A move that we support, promote the town of Harwich in the amount of 30,000, this is a Harwich Chamber of Commerce, uh, article, it is a customary article, and, uh, I think it would be hard to dispute that we're not getting our money's worth out of this article with the amount of work that the current Executive Director does, uh, both in promoting the town of Harwich, but also the sales of beach stickers, uh, and the participation in the meeting. I think that the.
Absolutely.
Chamber has done an outstanding job for the town of Harwich, so absolutely support this.
I would second and, and echo what Michael said. Yep, it's clearly doing a world of good. Any other discussion? If not, we'll take a, uh, a vote, Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Article thirty-nine, as it's listed, I'm going to have a hard time making the motion on this, I believe this is going to take up a lot of time at town meeting, I think this is going to be a heavily debated article, and this time I can't support it.
And, and, uh, I won't support this either right now, so, I, I'm going to back away from it myself.
Won't support including it in the warrant, or?
Well, it's already in the warrant.
It's in the warrant as a citizen's petition.
It's in the warrant as a citizen's petition, so that's, that deal.
But the Board has the right to take a position.
I just have some concerns about mandating this, uh, I like education on it, but I've argued this in the past at some of our meetings, and, uh, we all have differences of opinion, this one I've been consistently concerned about.
I do know that other towns have asked the petitioners on this article to bring it back for the following year because of debate, and I, and I know there's been some resistance from the petition, petitioners, but I would ask that the town of Harwich do a similar stance on this and ask that they bring this back, um, next year, because I do believe that this is going to be something that's heavily debated at town meeting, which we're trying to get away from. So I, I would ask for the Board's support in asking them to bring this article back. Certainly, they have the right to have it on the warrant, and, and I wouldn't debate that at all, and my personal feelings on it, um, are irrelevant at this point, but I do think this is going to take some, some serious time at town meeting.
Do we, Mr. Chairman, do we anticipate having them do a presentation in front of the Board of Selectmen before town meeting?
We can ask it, we can offer them that opportunity.
Okay, I would like to hear that before.
Yeah.
Making any.
They did come before the Finance Committee, and, um, we listened to their arguments, and, um, our biggest problem was, uh, they haven't done any research in Harwich at all, this is a national, um, effort, uh, Capewide effort, a state effort, um, but they didn't research Harwich at all as to what effect their bylaw would have in the town of Harwich, they just said it would affect every retailer, um, but they didn't do any research at all to see how it would affect them. And, um, it's a matter of, they need to educate us, they spent a lot of time telling us they need to educate us, they will educate us, and we summarily voted against it, seven zero.
I would agree with Ed if, if I could, Larry, to have them come before.
I think that's fair, give them a common courtesy to come, uh, present their case in front of us. Uh, that, that also applies to Article forty, because they're really, they're the same, uh.
Forty-one, the, uh, climate policy bylaw?
No, the recent action taken at annual town meeting last year, because that was the, uh.
Oh, right, right.
That was plastic, was it plastic straws or plastic bottles? It was basically the same subject.
Was it, uh, plastic, uh?
Plastic containers.
Plastic containers.
Plastic containers, so, I'd say, Michael, those are basically the same subject, we should offer them a chance to come here, and, uh, as a courtesy, we, we should hear them out.
I agree on that.
Yeah, well, yeah, you know, unfortunately, um, all, all of the things that they, they talk about, except potentially the, uh, the beach vendors, uh, didn't happen this summer.
Yeah.
So we don't know what the impact.
So we don't know what the deal is.
I mean, I, you know, as, uh, involved with the Cranberry Festival, we were all set to pull the trigger on, uh, having a, uh, mobile aluminum can or canned water for us, and it would have come out at a cost less than, uh, it cost, would cost us to buy plastic bottles of water to sell. So.
So is the intent to, uh, ask Forty to come back as well and present, do a presentation?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, because I think they're the same, basically the same subject.
Okay, so is it consensus to hold a pending petition?
Hold and ask them to come in?
Yeah.
If you can do that, Joe. The next one, uh, petition article, I, I'm in the same place on this, um, they can come in and, uh.
I am as well.
Present their case, but I read this as being, uh, not a, a town article, but a, uh. I read this as not a, uh.
Policy bylaw forty-one, Stephen?
Sorry?
I read this as not being a town article, but being a political statement that they want, want endorsement of, and, uh.
Yeah, they're, they're actually, Mr. Chairman, they're actually looking, um, talking to the moderator about, uh, making this an, um, a resolution rather than a, uh, bylaw request. They'll probably come back to you and ask about making some changes, um, in, in their motion, um, but they, they prefer to move this as a resolution rather than as a bylaw.
Yeah, because I don't, the way it reads now, it's not a bylaw, it's a political statement, that there's a, there's many places they can do that, but I don't feel Town Morgen is one of them.
Right, they're not, they're not ready for a bylaw yet, this is a, a very large program that's going to cost a lot of money, and, um, they had, they're, they're at the very beginning stages of it, so.
Okay, uh, Joe, and then?
If I could, just while you're discussing this, now, for me, I had a different, um, eye on it, uh, to ask you all, it's my understanding that, um, policy has been, uh, policy development creation has been the purview of the Board of Selectmen, and it strikes me that they're looking to create a bylaw that would cause you to develop a policy, um, which I think is overreaching, so hearing that it could be a resolution is helpful, but, um, is that typically how it has been here in Harwich, that the Board of Selectmen is the policymaking board? Um, you've got a number of policies, so that if there's a resolution, perhaps they could go that way by partnering with the Board of Selectmen, but to create a bylaw to cause you to do a policy is problematic, in my opinion.
That's an interesting question, we do policies for the Board of Selectmen, I'm not sure we've done policies for the town.
We could policies for the town.
Well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That may be an option, I just know I don't like the way it's stated now, maybe resolution is the way it goes us out of that.
Uh, you know, the, uh, I know, in, last year, town meeting voted, uh, um, uh, funds for us to, uh, do a new comprehensive plan, which essentially is a new policy for the development of the town, now whether or not we actually conduct it is, uh, still within our purview, um, but, uh, we didn't say, no, no, you can't tell us that we have to come up with new, essentially, development policies for the, for the town, as a way to push it back. We'd simply, we decided we didn't want it to happen, we'd just simply not fund the program.
My opinion is that Board of Selectmen have written on policy by town meeting.
Yeah, but if they're already, uh, discussing the fact that they might come back with a resolution, let's leave it at that, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see where they're going on it, I would not move, I would not, uh, I wouldn't be in favor of moving on this as it is, they know that. Michael?
So, I move that we, uh, support, supplement the annual allocation of mass cultural council for local cultural council grants in the amount of 3,900 dollars.
Second.
Discussion? You know, we're, we're watching money, but I can't believe how little we support cultural, that we can't find some more money for this, but that's another discussion for another day.
No, and they've done an outstanding job getting grants as well, so.
Yeah, they have, but, uh.
It's up 300 dollars from last year.
Okay, quiet.
Ed, and then we'll, I'll.
Yeah, it's up, it's up a slight amount, uh, there's other, other things that we fund that have creeped up painfully slow, like the Human Service Grant Program, the, uh, Jim Noonan Human Service Grant Program, and quite honestly, the support for the two private libraries has been 20,000 dollars since I first.
Forever, we haven't changed it.
Came to town meeting, and given that last, the fifteenth of this month was the twentieth year, twentieth anniversary of arriving in town, it's been stuck at that level.
That, that's a good point.
You know, so, there are many things that I think we could look at in the future.
Yeah.
Quite possibly, this, this isn't the year to do that.
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, look at this and, and the work they do, and it's, uh, jumps out at you.
If, if I may, I, I think I need to change the motion on that to accept, adopt, and place in the warrant, this is a customary, not a petition.
Yeah, yeah.
Your second still stands?
Yeah.
I think Steve seconded. Other discussion?
Yeah, and just through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Chairman, I wasn't sure of that, um, I don't have confirmation that this was free cash, but if he could confirm, I'll go from there.
Did you hear the?
Yes, but it's been in the past.
Thank you.
Okay.
A move that we approve, uh, accept and adopt and include in the warrant, the herring fisheries article.
Excuse me, we need to hold on this, we got way.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
Ed, aye, okay.
Okay, I'm going to do that again. A move that we accept, adopt, and, and place in the warrant, the herring fisheries article.
Second.
This is always our favorite article, so I know.
Joe, can you explain this one? This is a trick question.
Oh, I was going to say, um, I see that it's one sentence, so sure.
Be fully expected to give an explanation on the floor. Be fully expected to give an explanation on the floor down here.
We're going to do everything we can.
This is Heinz Proff's job.
Well, this was, who's the lady that always did this, calls the meeting?
Marion.
Passed away a couple years ago.
Marge Marion.
Marge Marion.
Marge Marian, yeah, that was...
Actually, this is an interesting article historically, because in, apparently in the original...
That's going to explain it anyway.
In the original grant establishing the town of Harwich from the Crown, one of the assets that was bequeathed to the town was the ownership of the herring fishery, which they used to auction off every year, and use the funds to maintain the ministry.
Wasn't that nice of the Crown?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Oh, Grudges die hard.
I'm an aye, Michael.
I'm an aye.
Steve? And that was Michael and Ed?
Yeah.
And on other rivers, just another note, I read recently, the Shad Row Fishery during the Revolutionary War was used to support the Colonial Army. And so, without the Shad fishery, we may still be British, and speaking funny.
Yeah, well...
Mr. Chairman, not to kill the move, but at the very end, you'll see there, I had them as placeholders, I've numbered them, but I do have another procedural question for the Board.
Yeah.
So, is there an expectation that they would come up at an earlier point in the warrant, recognizing that these require two-thirds vote and can engender a lot of discussion?
Talking about the multifamily in the West.
I just didn't want to infer that I was placing these at the end, so they could be renumbered and replaced elsewhere if the Board thought otherwise, but also that of the three articles you can see that last night, on August 17th, you voted to support, accept, and adopt the West Harwich Special District, there are still two zoning articles that have, that have been referred by you back to the planning board, but would need action at some point. And then lastly, is it correct to put it down as Board of Selectmen, or would it be Board of Selectmen slash Planning Board, or anything else as far as sponsors?
No, the Board of Selectmen, because it's, even though it comes...
You refer it back to the Board, yeah, I understand that.
Because we're the ones that are in charge of the warrant.
Is there a thought on placement?
Well, I, these are very, I, I'd move it further up in the agenda.
Yeah.
Usually, they're grouped with the, any of the adopting kind of things, like the Mass General Laws ones you're doing, I put them in myself at like, just after 21, which is the round code boat ramp, and then, then you get into your procedural stuff after that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would go with that.
Thank you.
And it's before the...
Before the assessing, assessment.
Well, it's also before the CPA articles, so it will, CPA articles tend to keep a number of people in the meeting.
Yeah.
Very good, very good.
When is the, I know they're, they're having public hearings on these, when are those set for, do we know?
We do, but we forget, I was just talking to Charlotte about that this morning, there is...
We're in September?
Huh?
What she laid out last night, they would be in September, just two, one week before the meeting.
That's for the Special District, I believe. The Essential Services was referred by the Board back to the planning board in June, so I believe that one might be the one coming up next week, but I can verify and send back to you.
Send emails to us, so we know then, thank you, Joe. Joe, we've, I think we've gone through the articles we need to tonight, let me go back to where I cut you off before on different, other articles and the direction you'd like to discuss with us.
Well, I guess the overall question I have is, with regard to explanations, there's an expectation that, first of all, it's English syntax, sentence format, if you will, but I would imagine the intent of that is to give as much information as possible, so that as the voters are reading these ahead of time, they may have less questions. I'm just trying to leverage that to inform, correct?
And to minimize the legalese as much as possible, so it's understandable.
Sure, yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
To help you out, Joe, I'll send forward, the Finance Committee has completed most of the recommendations on our positions, I'll make sure that I forward those to you as well, and that has some explanation into it as to why we're supporting it or not supporting that may help you.
Very good, thank you.
What did we do on, did we take any action on the capital items funded from free cash? Under $50,000?
No, intentionally, there were no actions on the first 11 items.
Okay.
Right.
We'll come back to those.
Just because Larry and I had talked previously on that.
Well, if we could, the air packs themselves aren't under $50,000, I mean, it's a half a million dollar purchase for the town, and how they get categorized as being under...
Well, it's the request for the amount of money the town has called upon to appropriate.
Not the total amount, no.
But these are, but the title of it is capital items funded from free cash, it isn't cash contributions to capital items under $50,000, it's, it's the actual, purchased the actual items.
Ed raises an interesting point, because in the past, we've always listed the total amount, and then listed the funding sources, and so the, the amounts of total amount, and then the, what we're asking the town for is the approval of the, basically, the total amount contingent on the, using words like contingent on getting grants, so that the charge to the town would be 50, whatever it is, $20,000.
I mean, I would think we want the voters to know that we're pursuing this grant, and...
I think that's a good point, Joe, maybe we can...
Cover a lion's share of the cost, and...
I think that that's best done if we, if that's as a separate article, essentially.
I would agree with that, and then we leave it up to the motion to, that's what we've done in the past, Ed picked up on...
What did we do last year? This is not new, this was on the warrant last year, so what did we do last year? I think that's a great explanation.
We should say, we're going to do...
We have to look, we can double check that.
I think you're probably marrying what we did last year, whether it was right or wrong, I think.
Correct, yeah, what I, what I changed was the syntax within the box itself that was in the article. It does comport with, first, the capital plan that was presented by Chris, and then by me to you, and then later iterations, and it's broken out within the capital plan as town-funded portion that at the time was 27,389, and it said, voted contingent upon grant, and then the grant amount is in there in the capital plan, showing the total of the two.
Right.
We've done these before.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that.
You just said, we've done them before.
Well, this, I think, a good point is to, is look back and be consistent with it. I'm more...
I think Ed's right.
He is right.
I think we just have to figure out if we can change it and put it in the warrant the way it should be in the warrant, too.
I guess I'm more concerned with it being consistent with the capital plan than I am necessarily with what we did last year, so that they can make sense of it.
Dana?
Did you vote Quint out? Is that article out?
That article is out on the direction of the fire chief.
Okay, so maybe that leaves you space, you can add, split that into two different articles, the less than 50K, to me, that title is wrong anyways, because we don't have under 50K anymore on the capital plan, so just having two separate articles for those pieces would be a good way to go.
I think, yeah, that's a good point, there's no merit in emphasizing less than 50 or greater than 50, in any case, right?
Right, we don't have under 50K on the capital plan anymore, because the new rules voted June 30th changed that.
That gets back to that little chestnut we've been kicking around for a while about, had this, had this gone the normal route in pandemic, this would have been an effect for fiscal year '22.
Right.
So it's fair to say that we've done articles before that said free cash items under 50K.
Right.
Yep.
Be easier to continue that way because of our time crunch now.
Exactly, that's how I feel.
We'll leave it to you, we'll leave it to you, Joe, to where you feel comfortable with.
Can we give Joe the discretion to do that?
Yeah, whatever was, was most comfortable and consistent.
I took that discretion as consensus, is that okay?
As consent.
Thank you.
Right, Ed?
I make a motion, we adjourn?
The second?
Yeah.
Take a roll call, Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Ed?
Yes, yes.
Thanks for coming.